I ain't gonna lie, it's still kinda croaky. I'm looking back. It's still kinda croaky. Damn. Yo, yo, yo. I'm just. Damn, this is, this is croaky. Let's get into it. Nah, I don't like that. You wanna come in or not, girl? What you doing? You won't have to stay in here though. She ain't gonna stay in here long. She ain't gonna stay in here long, right, girl? Alright, so man, I wanna drop more videos with Cap Cut, bro. Bro, Cap Cut is god tier of the editing app. It's like when I found Cap Cut, I knew niggas talking about Final Cut, Dizor, DaVinci, Gucci, Boochi, all the other, bro. I'm like, I don't need that. I don't need it. And so come out, do all the other shit. I don't, I don't wanna do all the other shit. So. I don't know, I might have to find, bro. I went there, I went today, they was saying, update some stuff for your computer. I updated some stuff. Look, she wanna leave already. And I'm about to show y'all how to keep while one-on-one RRs is better and fucking. Let's get into it. Nice study session. Let's get into it. So this is what I took today? I lost twice though, so. Let's see. I lost twice. And he, alright, so three, okay, three setups. I lost this one. Did I take a gold one? Yeah. So I took two EAs and two, um, tree setups. I love the new tree. The new tree, we don't go for one-on-ones, we go to one for sevens now. One to sevens Ohio. And then. Oh, man. Bro, I really, I'm just upset cuz it's like I wanna do videos that I really said that with Cap Cut. Oh my gosh, bro. Cap Cut, bro, it pissed me. I might have to see something, bro. Oh my gosh, the cap just pissed me off, so. We traded three times for thirty. Uh, let's see. So right here, you can, I don't wanna do the five thirty jump no more. Like, if I wake up at five, maybe I am gonna wake up at five thirty. And I do one-on-ones on five thirty. Should I change that to even one to seven instead of fucking? You know what it was. That's why I don't really do five thirty. I've touched it, but it works, but. I just don't like it, so. So right here. See right here, I got in boom, boom, two minutes later, or three minutes, wild down, hit stop loss. Never really hit take profit. If it had a one-on-one, it would've hit take profit. Nah, it just hit stop loss first, but never really hit take profit, um. Yeah. This could've been an error. I think. This would've been a bad answer. That'd have been a loss. This would've been a, uh. This would've been a W. That's why I said tree, when it comes to fifty-fifty, you got, I, if you, if you, like, our tree was like sixty, like, it was right like sixty-five percent of the time, or like sixty-eight, like around that area. Are we gonna calculate all the stats? Uh, probably Wednesday we'll drop a video. If, bro, I don't know, I don't know, bro. I wanna drop so much video, like, I was really planning to go video crazy this week, but. Oh! Let's see, so, one. Probably would've, I don't know, he probably, probably would've answered, so like. One-on-one. Let me stop doing all these losses cuz we already do them. Wait, so five thirty, we, we might not, we might have to start. We, uh, for real, for real, I still wanna do five thirty cuz five thirty is a good time, don't get me wrong, but as of right now, I'm, now I'm focused on five thirty. Took this joint, lost. Could've took this one and won. Could've took this one and won. It was so much you could've took. So one, you know. Yo, you done won this one, the stop loss right here. I keep telling y'all, bro, don't, don't be fooled, bro, cuz I be almost hitting take profit. Look, look, the stop loss has been right here. You done won this one. Oh, we fooled. It only took you out. I'm telling you, it's not gonna take you out. Then that, and then this one is another one, so. That's two, that's two trees, back to back, but let's see what we went into, so. Got a nice EA. And the crazy thing is, I, I think I should've just never, no, cuz, alright. I answered this one? No, this was a tree I was supposed to enter. You see this tree? Boom, boom, so that'd have been a nice tree. There's not no, um, EA setup. So boom, 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 comes up, comes down again. Like I said, if it comes up, like, alright, it breaks, it hits the second, it comes up, it breaks down, it's not breaking here, and it comes above the fifty, that's a nice time to enter. Like, cuz look, it's not, that touch, our second touch. I like entering off it when it goes up, but if it goes up, and it's not breaking this area, and it comes down, and it goes back up to fifty, you always enter, baby. You always enter. And then boom, you could've, and then, look, you could've entered twice. So say, you seen another, I seen another, uh, setup. EA setup, say you want to enter here. I'll take profit, it was here, and I'll stop loss, it's here. But instead of that, instead of that, if you went both, once it hit that, uh, you could, you just ride it up to here, and that would've been a nice, and that would've been a nice profit with the nice four-to-one, with the nice eight-to-one. That you'd have been up. And then, three thirty, this hit TP. Three thirty, this fails TP. Three thirty, this hits TP. Three thirty, so boom, boom, boom. Nah, nah, this fails, this fails TP. This fails TP again. So fail, fail. Alright, bro, yeah. Looked like it failed again. Damn, three failures in a row. So fail, fail. But look, it is there. If you really entered off this one, you would've just lost. Instead of saying, hey, like, that's why sometimes you have to trade this in real time, cuz I'm starting to get it, cuz I, like, the old me would've said this, and I probably couldn't trade it. No. You gotta, say if you just entered the three, it hit that fifty, but it smacked down, that's a L. And then I entered, uh, for, but it started winning more as it came back down, fifty, boom. It hit its take profit. I was gonna re-enter, but I don't know, I just feel like I was getting better, so boom, boom. Another thirty, so boom, this is a L, this is a W. And, uh, we seen like three trees lose back to back, but if you see about, I'm telling you, that one point seven makes up for it because every time you even hit one point seven, usually, instead of one, it usually kinda hit one point seven, and sometimes there. Look, tree right here. Let's see, uh, look, this, the tree right here, never hits, never hits, never hits. When it hits, it goes in the profit. But it's four thirty, probably even trading that one. There's another tree that hits, so boom, enter right off, back, lose, come back, another tree. Another tree, comes here, comes here, right off the back, it wins. So, it's a couple of trees that miss and a couple of trees that hit. You wanna just keep entering, cuz you answered with a one point seven, then it's more pleasing. So for, so for US thirty, we entered the one point seven, a one and a one, so let's go write that down for the week. I don't like this one. So let's go. So for Monday. That looks pretty. It hit me five. After week five, we're going full trial hard mode on prop firms. This has been a month, we've been studying this. It's been profitable. Except one week when we overtraded, but we start to get it more and more. And look at this week, so one L. But this one is. Uh, uh, one point eight. So. And another, uh, one point. It was a three point seven. Oh, I think it was three point seven. Let me see. I, I, I don't wanna calculate it, or, I wanna calculate it, or, let me see whatever. Actually, you got, it was three point, let's see. So. Cuz sometimes I fucking. Is, we gonna say one point seven and. Seven, but eighty-one, so. Nah, that's actually a two point. But some of the stop losses is higher than usual, so we just gonna say one point seven and three point, uh. What was the eighty-one times three? We gonna, we gonna say four, because our stop loss, some of them hit ninety, some of them eighty. Like, some of them hit eighty-five. It's at eighty-five, ninety-two, and ninety-six. I don't know, sometimes it just be whicking. So we gonna put this, we just gonna count this as a thirty-two, so we don't have to put like a extra, you know, like a extra one point two for stop loss. We just want the most wins. But it's really, it really was like a two and a, and really almost a three point nine, but since our losses kinda like, kinda didn't hit eighty-one percent, hit like eighty-eight, you gotta like kinda diminish the Ws and just keep it a I, so. That's what we got for this week. Not bad, like I said. I don't know, I be feeling very good when I win, very good, but I don't like feeling that way, cuz I, I just wanna see consistent growth. I wanna see consistent. So this is it right here, so W, so boom, gold, I think we. We already know what we is. I think we only took one gold trade. Gold was looking very nasty this week. Where's this week before, is it week four? Where's this week? Five. This, this is nasty. So, to this, it's to a point where I gotta have at least a two percent, even on the two. I wanna see, uh, bro, if I can get a two percent on a point twenty-five for both this week, I feel more comfortable. I see why I got negative one, I kept overtrading dumb shit. But look, this is pretty, look, caught two, this one. Point thirty-two, second week, point one, and I was with the fifties. That was with the fifty, and then the first one was fifty-two, so fifty-fifty, then I switched to the twenty-five, so it'd have been what? It'd have been point sixty-four, negative two. Uh, and then, we still doing, I wanna see if I hit a point two with the fucking twenty-five, but. We're, 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 oh, but market was looking that, and the thing about studying your strategy, I'm gonna tell the honest truth, is you know kinda not win the trade. Cuz you can keep taking setups, don't get me wrong. That's why I said, the backtesting don't really show it all. This is more like, like it to me, to be honest, because this is what I take in real time. I'm not taking all them, like, this, look how nasty the market looked today. I seen this, it was choppy, it didn't look, it wasn't moving like that, so I just didn't trade. And then I seen the EA, it, it, it was just looking very nasty, like, market, like, it's, it's just. Right, this joint won't looking good, bro, like, I didn't even wanna enter this, like, I think it was a, a tree setup, yeah, tree setup, boom, boom, it hit the one-on-one, and I told you about the tree setups on gold. I don't really like taking trees on gold. I just like taking EA, cuz EA, that, it should always hit. Cuz gold is gonna hit that one-on-one main majority of the time, so I would take a tree, but price, it just didn't look good today. It just didn't look good. Just didn't look good today. Like, look, another tree that hit almost a one-on-one fail. Uh, damn, tree going up, it's kinda probably. So boom, nah, so boom. Look, I, look, this shit look nasty, so first, let's just delete, I don't. I wanted to sell right here too. I don't, so first, I was trying to catch this tree. I seen this drunk, it came up here, I was trying to catch this tree. I was late to the party. Soon as I, I was looking, like I said, that's why I said, you can't enter, uh, everything. I wanted to enter this tree. Nice little one to nine. Nice one to one. Was good, was good. My boy. Uh, he should've been there, man. Ah, you can't be there, but shit, I'm almost done. How much I got left percent wise? Damn, I got three percent left. After that, prop firm complete. But I could've caught this early in the morning, but I said that, that shit be going too fast. Went way too fast. Gold was nasty though. Gold was real nasty to me. Gold, that shit was just nasty. I was gonna enter here, didn't enter. I missed two setups, so I'm like, man, fuck. I'm like, fuck, man. I'm like, damn, I keep missing these damn setups? I keep missing. I leave the crib late, ten o'clock, I'm sitting on for the setups, so I'm like, alright, boom, we see a new setup. Got the nice three to three point seven R, fucking lose, boom. Lose, but thirty, thirty paid the bills today. Thirty paid, thirty paid today, so thirty, we went, uh, we went two and one and thirty, but like I said, you always get better RRs, man. Always do better RRs. Cuz I did a, I caught a three point five and a two, but I'm only losing that one, you feel me, so, but you gotta make sure it's a high percentage, so. So this L, I looked at gold. I looked at gold and I said, let me see, I looked at gold and I said, this shit look nasty, I don't wanna trade this. Cuz it hit here, and it's telling me it's whicking all the way over here. I'm like, bro, if the market don't wanna drop, it just gonna fucking range like that, so I just didn't trade it no more. Well, you just have to understand the market. If you see the market over time and time and time and time, you like, man, I'm not trading this shit, cuz if it ain't wanna drop, it's either just gonna keep ranging, or it's gonna go up, and what it did, it just kept ranging in this area for about a couple of, probably like three hours, so boom, boom, boom. Gold really ain't do shit today, but at five thirty, if I woke up a little at five thirty, I probably would've been going crazy. Look how trendy it was on five thirty. Nah, maybe not. I'm looking at two, so let me see, five thirty. Five thirty, it probably went crazy. A nigga say you can't trade on a one minute, I found that a fucking lie, cuz I'm about to pass, man. The only thing, I wish I started on a five minute, but I've been studying this shit for so long, cuz the one minute, it's like, when I'm going to work, I'm driving, I got other shit to do, I gotta do the school and shit, I'm like, man, I gotta, I can't. The, the setup be coming so damn fast, but you can't catch a lot of setups. That's why I don't really mind too much of missing something. I don't mind too much, but the only ones I don't like missing is these ones, these EA ones. Cuz those are my three point five RR ones. Those are the ones I gotta cash with the three RR, so we could take some stats today. So these the stats. I'm about to show y'all all the stats I took for the whole month of trading. Bro, niggas say you can't trade one minute. I took every fucking setup, man. I wrote every fucking setup down and showing people, wow. Cuz I don't want people not to believe me, cuz I'm like, man, if this shit just don't work, I'm gonna just stop doing it. But look at this, I took every setup. I wrote a percentage down, sold a percent from, from here, so look. If you take every setup of my strategy on US thirty, twenty percent you would've gained on your account. Two point seven on the EA system, nineteen, and then my tree system, it was sixteen percent. So you would've almost gained fucking double your account, basically trading on hot, hot tree. But I'm not been done. The last day for the month, probably is gonna be about the end of this week. I'll drop a video on it with fucking Cap Cut trash. So. Oh shit, this shit look nasty. So what was the last, what's the last days? The sixteen? What was the last day? The sixteen, go, and then Monday. So calm. Put that over here, put this over here, push that over there. Push this. Push this over here, push that over here, push it over here, push this over here. And now we gonna do thirty first. I ain't gonna lie, the tree is going to, um, one point four-four, so we gonna rate. One point four, one four. I'm telling you, bro, this strategy, it's, it's killer. It's killer. Pass that one, flying colors, about to pass that two. I need to pass two prop firms, this gotta be my third. Then I pass. F T M O, my Forex funds. No, I passed another one, they just, I, hey, my, hey, I know, he passed it with me. It was one of them shits, uh, the K O T, I passed that shit, they never gave us the account. But I'm not gonna count that though, so I'm gonna pass every shit I got a, um, certificate for, but this E eight gonna be the third one. So, yeah. And you, and you just gotta imagine it, you gotta, um, you gotta know you popped a pass and shit. He would be like, you gotta manifest it. Yeah, you gotta manifest it, but if you don't put in that fucking word, you manifested nothing. Niggas be like, manifested, man, pray to God. Yeah, you could pray all you want, nigga. I ain't saying praying wrong, but shit, niggas be praying that they're sitting on their eyes. I had to, I had to be like, bro, I woke up one day, I said, bro, I, I can't, bro, let me get this fucking payout, bro. I just woke up one day, I said, bro, I know I could do the long-term trade. I got some money in the long-term trading. I made a couple of thousand in the long-term trading. I see, I see my boy, man, I be muting in chess. I seen you was eating it. I, I should've said something. I seen you up like twenty K, so I was like, damn. I ain't like you, I probably got about five, but shit, you eating. So look, I'm more eating. I might've got like twenty K in the account, thirty thousand. That's the real money, man, so look. Oh shit. So we gonna go to five thirty. I don't, I swear, thirty, uh, gold is gonna look nasty. This, the stats for this is gonna get like diminished in like a month's time, because it's gonna be set up, this is just every setup I see. It's gonna be to a point, no, every setup, like, following a trend in the area, like, I ain't gonna take no random, random shit, like, I'm not taking every setup, like, oh, I see it, so I'm gonna just take it. If it's not following a trend direction, I'm just not gonna take it. Or if the market just be looking nasty, or the market be like too high of an area, I probably just won't take it, but I still take it on these tests to see if it, it just, um, statistically good. So, I ain't gonna lie, this shit might go two for five thirty. We got the one point four now. We only doing one point fours. I had it on the paper. I only did it for three days. No, girl. I only did this for three days, but I said, bro, I don't wanna do one-on-ones. It just, I don't feel good just taking a one. I don't, honestly, I don't feel good taking a one-on-one. I just don't. So let's see. Even though five thirty, I'm doing one. Like, even five thirty, I'm gonna take away the five thirty one-on-ones, it's just. I'm gonna just keep it for this week, and this probably the last week I'm trading any one-on-ones. So let's go, so five, you can see, boom. Let's see what it does. Okay, it's like, I don't, alright. So boom, boom. Oh yeah, you done answered. We're answering, stop loss. Put that jump right there, so boom. Sorry, loss. This look like a loss, let me see. Does it hit? It might've been a loss. Yo, both loss. Damn, bro. Nah, I, I would've counted, yeah, I'm gonna count that as a loss. Yes, so maybe it's just been by, and I had, would've been bye-bye, so. He not doing the three to RR unless it's an EA. So boom. We gonna, if we can stay bye-bye, it's like. I see, he gonna stay bye-bye. You see, we gotta stay bye-bye. To me, I think he's gotta stay bye-bye. You can't switch up, like. You saying, is it a buy trend? Fine, let it stay in a buy trend. Like, you can switch, don't get me wrong, but switch when you really see that shit switching, like. Here's what it's showing me. Okay, it's a sell. Don't get me wrong, yeah, you probably hit a one. Okay, it's a sell, don't get me wrong, yeah, you probably hit a one more sells, cuz look, watch this. One sell, one, two sell, one, but our buyers was. To buy, three sales, one, four sales, that's our first loss, right there, but. Like I said, this is when that R to R come into play, we one and one, one and one, yeah, we negative for this one, positive for this one, but it comes in play. If you just take way more. If you take way more setups, so we buy bias first. Watch how the buyers to switch over, boom, six thirty, I don't know what six thirty thought going on. Maybe you do answer, so, you answer. Boom, you lose. So you lose, so you one and three, so I. I, but you enter this, one X, that you probably. So boom, you two and, ah, you're three and three, three and two. I'm tell, watch, I'm telling you, there's a lot of setups too. Or if you really think you're buy biased, like, so say, you lose this one. I would've entered it, like, I wouldn't, say you don't wanna take this one, but I noticed about five thirty, a month of doing this shit. If it goes up so hard like this, I'm not, I don't be scared to take the first one, I don't. I would say wait for the first one to come for the second one, I say take the first one and let it ride out. Of the one on ones though, I don't know about the one point fours, I don't have enough data for that, that's why I say I'm, I have enough to test the one point four. But low key, sellers was probably winning like shit, nah, nah. His sales was winning like shit though. So if he even wanted to sell, like, I said buy bias, imagine selling, like, people don't think you could win either way in the market. Look, so say it be sold, one win, two wins. Three wins, one out of three and one. So you doing three and one, probably three, you probably went the same shit low key, let's see. Uh, he probably would've answered three and two. And then no say, you don't really see no stuff, so you probably won't, I see both three and twos. With the same shit, and probably three and two with a um, the one point four, so it's really the same. I don't wanna enter those shits, probably would've entered this one, I probably would've entered this one. Not this one, this is a good one, don't get me wrong. You enter, you was just lost, so we even count that as a loss, so let's just count it. Cuz I just wanna show transparency, I'm not saying everything is right. But, I could show you, look, one point. So that's another one, so we could. Okay, check this out, we're three, now we're three and four. We're break even on this one already, that's why I feel good, I don't even care, I don't care, I feel way better doing. This one than this one, cuz even on four and three short, but I lost more and I still. Break even, I feel way better, way, I, I bro, I be feeling way better trading like this, so. Realistically, I'd be like two percent, you really probably like. Now look, four percent, you're, you're one point four percent, you're probably, I ain't gonna lie, you're probably like one point five. But we gonna say two, so. Cuz this one point four is really like a one point seven or one point four, so we probably done with the trading, so. Let's see, what time is it? Yeah, we're done. So boom, we're done, so this is the five thirty setup. Yeah, buy bias for thirty, let me see, oh shit, I ain't know my boy was in here. Oh no, long term, oh, no, no, lo- long term, yeah, I told you, man, the long term is fucking easy. I be telling niggas, bro, just uh, day trading and fucking investing is two different things, man, I had to really learn that. I'm like, yeah, thirty gonna go up, but if you day trade, man, one day that shit might just sell. You just gotta catch a good sale for two hours and then, but overall. Yeah, thirty, I had gone up, I was gonna buy a spa call, but I don't be, I don't be doing two months, I know I put some. Crypto maybe it's hella bank, again, I, I'll put a thousand in there. I'm up a hundred and twenty percent, I'm trying to get three hundred. Get like two bands, get like a three hundred K account, no, like a two, I'm gonna do two hundred, cuz I feel like prop firms. Ain't gonna wanna pay you out if you got a three hundred K account, and I know I'm, I'm starting to get cold at this shit. Cuz I almost passed top tier, I just stopped doing that shit, I said, bro, this fucking black nigga see me winning. Jamaican ass nigga see me winning, he do me like this, I said, nah, I can't do it. I went to E A, I seen, I had to look up some reviews on all prop firms. Did E A, they just don't pay you back, they just don't refund your money back, I don't like that shit, but. Oh, each is own, but I ain't see no complaints on that bit, none. So boom, what is it, four four, so you the game, it's two percent, you the game two percent. Took everything, or you the game one point four. I still like the one, I still like this one point seven R R. I still rather this one, I'm telling the truth, I don't wanna, I hate one on ones. Like, I was testing one on ones, it can work, but that shit, like, say. Like, I had one R, it wins like seventy percent of the time, but imagine if you just miss all of them one day, like. There's like five setups, are you back testing, it's like, man, it's five and three, five and two. You take three, you two and a one, I don't like that shit. If I was two and, like, if I took one setup and then two off of like a one point five or higher, I feel way better. Because my, my wins is way bigger than my losses. Yeah, all time highs coming back. That's, uh, all time highs coming back, I just gotta wait, damn, I see my computer. Yo, my computer going crazy, I wanna buy, I'd buy PC, I got a map book. This fucking gaming PC is talking about PC. My nigga making hell of bread. So alright now, we fucking done with this, so boom, we done. Yeah, all time highs, man. Man, y'all boy being them stocks, man, it, it's, to me, stocks is very easy, you just gotta be patient. I ain't wanna uh, like, if I day fools, I keep saying option trade, just option trade that bitch for like a year, like. I see you be doing it, just option, that's what I bit, when I first got it there, I said, bro. When I started option trading, it'd be like holding for a week, I'd be like, nah, that, that ain't make sense to me, I'd rather just stick with day trading. I said, I could hold this bitch for a year, get a good percentage out of that shit, woo. And even if it fuck up for the whole, say you get a call for a year, it can fuck up for six months. Come back to break even, go to seventy percent, you could just take out, that shit is crazy to me. That's what, that's it, but you gotta have that bread though, like you said, you gotta have that bread. He don't got that bread, ain't no point of doing that shit. It's no point. It's no point in trading options if you ain't got no bread. Is this one? I don't, man, I'm probably gonna count this, uh, let's see, what we probably would've. Count that, so it's a L and a W. God damn. Telling you, man, you wanna be. I wanna be cold at that option shit, just, let's hold that bitch. It's like, I wanna get into options, but I don't, I don't really have fucking, I really feel like you gotta have like. Alright, we, we talked about it, minimum ten K, he ain't got ten K, ain't no point of trading that shit. That's why I said, bro, I'm gonna do the prop firm, this is what I said, if I, if I. I gotta be done trading, cuz I can't trade with little money, uh, I'd uh. Put investments in the crypto, let it boom up to three hundred percent, take out, that's the quickest way, or. Do a prop firm, or get your own damn ten K and put it in the fucking trading account, that's how I thought of it, cuz. There's no point of trading six hundred dollars, there's no point, so, till I, either A, pass a prop firm, B. Got fucking twenty K to invest, it, it's really no point, I'm not investing no three K, four K. You, my boy, you did the right move, you, you said, fuck it, let me get my real money. Until then, I just do the prop firm, till I could get all that, I could spend, I'm gonna get on this shit. Until that, I'm gonna just keep going this prop firm, it's ain't no point. Damn, how much trees I, I need to one for one of that. No point, not trading, it gives me coin five hundred dollars and six and. You could grow the account or the fucking can, you know, you can't, I ain't growing shit with that. You could grow to even, it'd be a good percentage, like, you get five hundred dollars, you gain seventeen, like. It's like, niggas, you gotta, you gotta triple your account, that shit is gambling at that point. That's why I said I'll get a ten K, you give me a, a ten K account. Gain about four percent on that, that's four thousand, the prop firm take twenty, I get three thousand, but every two weeks, I'm good with that, bro. I'll take the three thousand taxes, two thousand five hundred. After that, you gonna be good. I swear tree was probably, rock is out of there, like, I wouldn't take this tree, you feel me, but. I take trees when it's usually, what I learned with the tree, I'm gonna break this shit down, this is just random setups I'll take while I follow the trend. I'm gonna make it so simple, E I is the only thing I may clarify to enter, tree is not really clarified to enter, but. When it breaks out like this and it comes up and comes back, that's when you enter, like, I, I'd enter this one, but. Like, the shit's down here, probably not low key, like, these shits I entered early, I probably wouldn't have entered. But that, that one I just lost, I wouldn't enter. What time this is, nah, uh, make sure. This is a nice stream, I'd have entered this, but this is a quick enter, like, I would've just entered him, he's gotta hurry up and finish, like. Yeah, I would've entered. But it lost though, but I would've entered that, so that's three, one and three. Wow, that's looking bad. I'm not gonna blame the day, the Monday, but statistically, we can see. Boom, I would've, hell yeah, this is something I would've entered, if it comes back on fifty, I would've entered the fuck out of this. Yo, I would've entered. Boom, you see, I would've entered that. Did I miss that? I probably, oh no. Oh, this is not thirty, I probably wouldn't have answered this, cuz it's not thirty. But, undertaking status, it's certain shit you gonna have to cut off, you know what? Can I say, I'm gonna say we lost. That's what I said, yeah, it ain't no point to, it's no point, I be telling, bro, I'm not trading. It ain't no more, it ain't no point, man, that's why I said, yeah, you got that money, go work, get that money. And then accumulate them joints, because you ain't gonna wanna, you ain't flipping no ten K to fifty K in a month, that shit is like. That's like how nigga be flipping like fifty, like a hundred dollars to five hundred, shit, you did it, don't get me wrong. But at that point, that shit, you must've bought at the lowest low, just said, fuck it. Like, cuz when I traded the options, I ain't had no leverage room, I put what, four hundred dollars in it. The option two hundred dollars, nigga, that shit go to waste, I'm done. And the options be expensive. I low key don't even wanna count this tree, bro, I don't wanna count that nine thirty, I would never, I don't wanna trade that, nah, I'm gonna just count this one as a W instead of. Yeah, man. Yeah, man, just, this is, hey, if a nigga just trade a prop firm or get your money off. I'm waiting, cuz even I be investing in the crypto a thousand, two thousand, I be like, man, this shit really not enough. I could make two thousand, it's gonna take me about four months, but. I don't, it's better than the savings account, cuz when that crypto dipped. And niggas won't talk about it, I think that shit went to Sablon, everything, babe, I said, bro, I'm just buying, let me throw a thousand. Shit up a hundred percent right now, once it hit three hundred, I'm gonna just take out, let the, keep my thousand in there, take a two thousand out, you feel me? Once I pass this prop firm, it's a fifty K account, I'm about a hundred K, as soon as I pass this one, I'm buying a hundred. Cuz I know how to pass these shits easy, I went from top tier almost past and I just stopped doing it, I ain't. But they said I was over leveraging, but they was like, you, you have another chance, we're just taking your green profits away, but didn't take my negative. So I said, man, this the type of prop firm that's gonna bullshit you on the payout, I said, I ain't doing this. But, uh, I said, let me do the E A, I heard good things about it, I read articles, I was like, yeah, I'd do that. Alright, alright, sure, man. I said, I ain't sure, man. Look how good this feel, three and three, still up one percent. I think this is an E I, I think I caught this. I think I caught this, yeah, so price hit the same area twice, yeah, I caught this, didn't I? Let's see. Oh, nah, I caught it. Okay, 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 I caught it over here, okay, okay, it wasn't E I though, I was right. So, this is probably, this is legit one of the best shit ever. Everyone really does this, they just call it something different, hits price twice and it doesn't wanna break, so you just catch on a, on retracement of. The second bounce, that's it. And it usually works fifty percent of the times with that three R R, so look. Boom, it doesn't wanna, look, as you can see, don't wanna break price. But you wanna see, it doesn't wanna break price, what price is that, is here, it comes up, retrieves. If it doesn't break here and it goes above the fifty, I'm entering, so. I did this, pulled it out, I seen a lot of red candles, pulled that bitch out. Pulled that bitch out, I did something crazy today too, pulled that bitch out, that's this, I'm almost done. I entered, once it hit that one on one, I knew I was winning, so boom, I knew I was winning. I did something crazy, is what I did, I kinda got in late, but I said, fuck. But it, it made me, it made me like triple. But it, it made me, it made me like triple the profit, so boom. Where is that? So boom, I got in right here, quick one, quick one, where is that, nah, not that, I got it right here, I'm tripping. Right here, again. Where was, was it there? I, I entered twice. Boom, yeah, it was right here, so boom, entered twice, I thought I had it above the one at first, or entered twice, but I entered late as fuck. I seen this, I entered like right here. I really put this as a break even when it came up to here. But once it came like up to here, I said, our, I know it's gonna hit, both of them gonna hit TP, well, it did hit TP for the other one, but. You rather well just, if this is your TP, make the other one your TP, so I gained like. Five percent. Cuz I was at like three, and then I just gained five, I said, damn, I'm almost done. Now I was at two, cuz I gained, I gained, I won another one today, so boom. No, I went three and one, not two on one, so I gotta fix that. So that E I. So E I is just the best strategy, if you, if anything for me, you just take the E I setup. It's really, let's take the E I. Yeah, the market, oh, let me see, the market going through all time, huh? Let's see, uh. Damn, what, where am I, I'm at the, yeah, let me look at the higher timeframe after this shit, huh? That should be, and going to smaller timeframe to higher timeframe, that should be fucking, yo. That shit really be fucking me up, let's see if this tree work out, I think this is when the tree started losing, like hella, hella. But you still better, you're still like one percent. Oh man, that's, that's a win. I'm about to see after this, this shit almost done though. Maybe it was one E I for, it was thirty today. On the E I. Thirty, thirty was fucking great today, say L. So L, L, four, but still, bro, you're on one point seven, one point seven, fourteen. Still like, it's still a little bit one percent while trading the same, that's why I like this shit. I wanna enter that. Lowkey, that shit's too small, would I enter this one, if it works? Doesn't work, but I answer, if it works, I still will answer, I don't know, it probably didn't work. You know what, I found it as a loss, it's close. Probably would have alerted my shit, I'm about to check that all time hard shit, but. I ain't been checking high timeframes ever since I invested, I told her, only time I invest, when that shit dipped, I'm like, okay, I, I buy. I don't really care, I'm not doing no, I'm not looking at higher time, bro, I just look at the highest shit, and I look at, it's down, okay, I just buy it. Well, cuz it go, everything goes up, just buy the dip. This is a good buy, him might have lost though, yeah. So one and one, so five, so he'd abandon. Let's see, can we go six and six? It kinda works. Yeah, that's a six and six. I would have, I thought it was a L, cuz I would have, damn, another L. Some shit, I'mma tell you which ones not to take though, eventually, cuz I know some of these shits, I just don't think. E I is just the best shit you can take, E I look like it's forming. Hold up, gotta touch this price, you gotta wait till it come up though, so boom. Here's another one, comes up, hold up. But the tree's been formed, boom, 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 doesn't hit nothing yet. It's TP. So, and this tree really like a one point nine, I'm just giving it grace, I'm giving y'all grace. So I don't wanna hear this shit, so if it comes back down, then it's an E I, so it's come back down to this yellow spot, what time is it? Six, that's three o'clock, well, that might, yeah, I probably gonna trade this shit. Yeah, I'm, I'll probably be done, I'm done, so boom, this is the stats for the day, so. I'm not gonna count this two E I's, I'm not, okay, you know what, I am, I took it, I am gonna count it, so that's. And that, the first, this E I was like a three point five one, the other one was like a, that shit was like a five point five, like a five point three four. No honesty. And then, the tree. You got it. Let's see, one, two, three. Four. Seven. Then seven, seven take away six, but one point seven, so watch this, it's a way different jump, where you don't do one on ones. One point seven. It is super. It's a five point, look, we almost won the, look, even if we was break even, we'd have been good. Five, nah, I gotta see, is this right? That's, that's a lot of percent, bro. One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven. Yeah, seven, and then lose, so we won seven, six, nine, you win five point nine percent of your account, the E I, you win five, so you don't take it as much. And then, a five thirty, five thirty, so boom, let me see, I'll do stats for today. Oh shit, we gotta write the E I stats, the E I was like an eight, it's an eight point. Eight. Eight point eight, like five. Percent. Write that down, gotta, let me see, alright, now let me look at the higher timeframe, that shit is probably crazy, like. That higher timeframe, probably, boy, this scalping strategy is crazy too, I've been telling, bro. I've been testing this shit for a month, I almost passed two prop firms in a math, only way I did it one minute, cuz I just wanted to pass this shit real quick. And I said, bro, I'm not, ever since I went ghost, I'm not looking at how no one knows trade, let me take the statistics, cuz I tried five minutes at first. It just won't working for me, I said, bro, this shit not working, it, I ain't gonna say it, it just won't. Crazy probably do like one minute, most niggas think you fail, you could fail a woman, if this, uh, where's the shit called, if the shit is bad, yeah. Ooh, I gotta switch. Let me see, let's look at spa. He said, oh, so, so long since. Like, this, bro, oh my gosh, it was such a great time to buy spa, yeah, I know your ass bought some spa. Q Q Q or son, I know you bought some, and just hold on, like, oh my god, that would've been great, like, I know you bought some last month. Cause April, alright, man, oh my god, cuz when president, when Trump came president, the shit just kept going up, like. Since October, the shit kept going up, I'm like, man, this dude for a drop. But one, I keep telling y'all, once it, this is, this is where you buy, you could have bought right here, anywhere, right, like, right here. It's gonna come down one more time, one more time before it takes off. I'll wait, though, long term investments, I'll wait, like spa, just wait. If it don't, it just don't. You, bro, like, look, how about, oh my, I know you, you probably did, but, oh, woo, this little nap, this looks beautiful right here. I know twenty twenty two, twenty, I remember, twenty twenty two was nasty, like, that was the definition of a ranging year. I don't think twenty twenty two, the market, matter of fact, look what I looked up in chat G P T. Cuz I was trying to tell nigga, I said, bro, if anything, I says a lot of bullshit niggas that's gonna teach you, um, spots and shit. I said, if anything, just invest in spa. Look what you gain your percent. So, I looked up the percentage of every spa shit for the last thirty years, in the last five years. Since we started trading, spa has been fucking booming, like spa is even more profitable, like, bro, so since, alright, let's just say we started in twenty twenty nine, if you hear me. First, twenty twenty nine, the shit gained thirty one percent, twenty twenty, that was COVID too. That shit was, and imagine if you bought at the low, you would have gained sixty. Twenty twenty again eighteen point thirty three percent, twenty twenty one again twenty eight percent, twenty twenty two, which I said it was a nasty year. It gained fucking negative eighteen percent, so you would have lost money that one. Chat G P T be going crazy, well, chat G P T go crazy, then twenty six point eighteen percent in twenty twenty three. And then last year, it gained twenty four percent, I think this year is gonna gain like. As long as it don't, damn. If it gain another twenty twenty percent, they gonna have to change the statistics of spa, cuz in the last, what? Almost five year, no, yeah, you say five, cuz the first three years is kinda trash. No, but even in the last five years, spa. It's been almost twenty percent every year, twenty seventeen, it was twenty, twenty nineteen, it was thirty, twenty twenty, you could round it up, twenty. Twenty twenty one, thirty, twenty twenty three, twenty six, and twenty twenty four, twenty five, spa is on a different type of level now. Niggas, you gotta make this fucking money. Spa ain't back in the day, even like, let's go to spa back in the day, this shit is not growing like that. It's not growing like twenty twenty, let's go to two thousand four, ten percent, two thousand five, four percent, two thousand, don't get me wrong, it's still growing, better than a savings account, really. Cuz what, what's the most you get, five percent every year? Off a, um, high interest account, the, the most you get is five point what, five point five? So. Uh. Nah, but time does show, okay, okay, so in nineteen ninety five through two thousand. It gained almost thirty, twenty, twenty, and twenty, so time do show, the shit is gonna slow down, so. But I don't think it's gonna slow down now, I think it's gonna have one more good year, two years good. And then it's gonna have bad years, but time and time again, but we never know, spa has been on a different type of level since the past years changed. And then who was the percentage of this? Approximately spa grows ten point seventeen percent every year, it's easy. How much, let me see Q Q Q, I'm not type that shit. Last, last thirty, bros, you gotta use chat G P T last thirty years, and they be drawing charts and shit for you. Bro, watch this, this shit is crazy, watch this. This shit is crazy, you can look it up on Google, but. Okay. Cuz I know some niggas love Q Q Q over the last. And look, so Q Q Q, look, Q Q is thirteen percent every year, they average, on average is about fourteen percent, and that's plus dividend. That's why I said when I'm rich, I don't know how rich niggas go broke. I don't know how rich niggas go broke, if you got about three million dollars, just put some investments, you're gonna get back. You invest in Q Q, just invest in smart stocks, don't even try to take risks, just, you get seven percent. There's what, Q Q Q, bro, twenty twenty three, the shit gained fifty three percent. I'm telling y'all, chat G P Ts, your friend, let's, when Tesla come out? I just said some dumb shit. Oh shit, LA. Tesla, I'm tripping. And it's Tesla coming out, actually, so, Tesla, episode, watch this. When, when Tesla started, we can say twenty ten, since, since twenty ten. Oh. Show. Uh, mission. Sure, every. Hmm, every year. Percentage. Percentage of Tesla. Bro. I ain't even looking at it. I ain't even looking at it. I ain't even looking at it. Forty percent, seven percent, eighteen percent, three hundred and forty four percent, forty seven percent, seven percent, forty five percent, six percent. Whoa, Tesla only had one bad year. So Tesla only had one bad year, that's it, and it was negative, and that was twenty, but I told you, twenty twenty two was a weird time for the market, bro. I think, bro, cuz I remember, when I first started trading, I ain't gonna lie, a nigga was profitable. I swear to god, a nigga was profitable, but twenty twenty two, something about the market just. I don't know, I don't think I was. I don't remember, I wish I remember twenty twenty two vividly, cuz, look at that, man. Let's go, let's go to gold, write this stats for gold. I don't care to do this again, I, I don't care to do two things, I don't wanna do it. If I test, uh, five thirty, we just gonna do an E I setup, lowkey. I don't care. You probably wanna get up out of here, alright, girl? Huh? Wanna leave? Four. And it keeps saying high usage rate, or I updated my computer, now it's high? Oh, I got on fucking tap, bro, I fucking hate tap, bro, man. I said you want to leave, I ain't know if you wanna, oh, you ain't wanna leave, girl? You ain't wanna leave, ah, come here, girl, you ain't wanna leave, come on, come here, come on, ah, yeah, you ain't wanna leave. Perfect. Uh, so we going up. Uh, we just going, hell, yeah, we just gonna stay bars, especially, they, a three to. The three to one would have been crazy today, but we gotta do these pushups after this, so, yeah. Hmm, yeah. I don't know, I hit one to one, but is that a one point four? Probably not, oh. If you want, if you wanna say you took this and that, it's a W and a W, both either or, so. L, so a W for two, so fuck, you know what I mean? W. Oh, oh, no, that's three, that's three Ws. Oh, fuck, I just saw his console, so, oh, no, yeah, yeah, so that's a W and a W, so that's three, man. I think, oh, god, I should have just took that, oh, yeah, yeah, cuz if I take both them away. I don't know, maybe I'm gonna cancel out the two. Cuz I don't really like it, like boom, it moves it. For, for five thirty, I do two instead of three. Cuz it just don't move as much. But I don't, I don't know, we gonna, we gonna see. Cuz every three one really kinda hit, this one, it was just so far, look, three. This, it doesn't work, doesn't work. Can end to more. What, what, Loki went to that? Damn, that's not important, why am I saying my own following? Oh, yeah, if that come back up, that's a, yeah, that's a answer. That's our entry. It's not five thirty, hopefully it worked. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Another entry right here, so, two Ws. So either way, five, it's both the same, that's crazy. I told you, it's like, it's rather, that's why you rather, I don't wanna enter no one around. Cuz if they both the same sometimes, and sometimes they four and three, like, look, you gained two percent to three percent. No, actually, three point, uh, three point five or three point four, this is three point four, this is two. Yeah, so. Two point percent, and then this is one point seven, one point. I usually delete these when I, but, uh, cuz I don't want too much of these when I replay this shit, but. It's still a point, I used to draw like, this, uh, uh, stop, it's like, I don't, I don't got enough niggas to show that to. Hmm, oh shit. Let's see, wait. Or even so, either, or this one. These is two still good ones right here, I just say this, boom, boom, wait, wait. Boom, I like, I like that, I like, if that shit comes back up, I'll, I'll like, I don't like how much points it is, but. Oh, no, then you don't answer, you see? Cuz it's telling you don't wanna go back up, but I like, I ain't like how much points, but I would have took that. So that didn't work, so, wait, wait, out of another E I. I miss so much. One fucking trees, let me see. I could just look at him. W for like one to one or, or. The goal was just nasty today. Now we going to sell, like, you see this big ass drop, the ass will make me flip. Unless it comes up hard. Like, look, it came off. I don't like how, look, you see, ah, I hate that shit, cuz it's showing red on this one. I hate when it do that, I'm like, no, bro, no, cuz I knew to enter this. Was it, let me see five, let me see the five. Yeah, it's telling me, it ain't. No, are going so three. Nah, cuz it waked up, but if it came back down hard, yeah, I would have took that. Crazy, E I is formed. And it probably works too. One, two, let's see if it works. Wait, nah, it doesn't work. The tree works. Oh, tree loses, I don't know, uh. If this would have been a loss, cuz look at this way, boom, you're gonna answer both the fifty, and then it would have gone. I get this one three, nah, you probably would have lost again. You probably would have lost again, cuz I'm like. I'm giving this, I can't give it the benefit of the doubt, that's a, uh. It third, it, damn, oh, it was just nasty. E I usually work, I don't be tripping on other shit, like, tree go negative today, just, I really wouldn't care to tree that well. Okay, this is a E I. I'll take this. I want the E I here, right? I don't have to say, I'm on no B S E I. So boom, 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 comes up, comes up, you know, swarm the cancers. Sorry, I have to take this one, that'll be, yep, knowing me, I'll take that one, please shut up. I told you, I only traded, bro, I only traded gold once, it just didn't look good to me, after this drop, after, look. That tree, uh, shit, I would have caught. That one tree, I probably would have caught, I would have been two, I probably would have been two and two, probably a little bit one percent, I would have been good. At two and two, I don't wanna trip the Easter. Where I already waited, boom, boom, I'd have been like two and one, and probably been, took this E I, probably would have done. I would have been done. Like, I'm not trading, I can't, I can't, I can't, bro, I can't, it's something in my head, it's don't, I can't trade this, bro. Cuz you going, it's just, you're gonna lose so much. Like, okay, say it was, uh, boom. Lost, lost, lost. Probably win this one, finally. If you, fuck it, you, we gonna do it, I'm not writing everyone, though, so like I said, we take, we ain't gonna take this one, say this one, boom. Is this the law, I wanna take this shit, I'm, I'm sorry, I just know I'm right, hell, I can't take that. Man, oh shit, this might have been wrong. I'm trying to be realistic, though, if it don't hit, it's just, alright, I'm counting as a win, 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 damn. Now I'm gonna go back and count them twos, the shit that was losing as well, it's just, I really wanna take them shits. I really, like, this one, I, I, once it did that, wake up, and then it came back down to that fifty. This is a little nasty, like, fuck it, we gonna write a L, we write a L, fuck it, we gonna write a L. It's two wins, and then we gonna say no Ls, I won't take any other shit, though, like this, okay, fine. This, okay, this, this wins, this, I. So, L, I don't, I don't, fuck, I'm just about to, yeah, I'm not just write it. Oh, oh, okay, I wanna be truthful in the future. I just wanna trade this shit, this shit looks nasty, like. Bro. This shit's doing, but I ain't gonna lie, and we could just write two more Ls and then, whatever. L. L, two. L, three. L, four. Damn. So it's always, it is about, yeah, we're done, alright, you know what, I'll write another L for you, just cuz. Ooh, this was, damn, this was nasty, this was, I ain't gonna lie, this was our worst day ever. I ain't even gonna be on no front and shit, this, I told you, I looked at the market today and said, this is nasty, once I log. Oh my gosh. I'm gonna do a deep dive in this one, uh, so, four, seven, so, one point, watch this. One point, seven times, four, this is point eight. Who is this? Oh shit, watch this, it's still, it's still. It's seven, oh shit. Ah, it's still a point, alright, if, you can release it for a year, point two. I wanna go back, now I wanna go back and look at, like, look at tree one. E I, damn, what we been doing, look, look, E I, look, that's why, bro, look at this shit. That's why, bro, I love E I for gold, bro, like. E I is always gonna hit, and it happens way more often, like, I don't look at, I don't give a thought about these shits. I just look at the E, let's look at the E I, just, just look straight at the E I. E I, one to two. Two to one, two to one. Three to two, it happens, it just happens so much, one to two, one to two. Still profitable, uh, one to two, one to two, two to three. Alright, yeah, we're done, like, uh, I ho- hopefully cap, I could do some, I'm a, I'm a fine son, but yeah, peace.